If you sat through. Can we come to order please and good evening ladies and gentlemen.
I've already won. It's not a super market, is it?
Can we, could I make a start please then? I've called the meeting to order. And the purpose of tonight is in accordance with the requirements of the Local Government Act 1972, the Town Council is required to hold a Town Council meeting, which can be attended by the Electors of Hemsworth, Fitzwilliam and Kinssy. The meeting will be chaired by the Chairman of the Town Council and the agenda is as follows. And that is to confirm the minutes of your annual Town Council meeting held on the 19th of May 22. Whoever proposed it. Thank you, Liam. Secondly, holding favour. So on the minutes. Yeah. Item two is the Chairman of the Town Council's report, which is me, but slight problem with that. I've only been the Chairman for five days. So to go through what's happened in the last 12 months is a bit difficult for me. So I've asked the Vice Chair to assist me in that because he was on the previous council and obviously better informed than I am. So there's not much I can say about the last five days really.
You're all going to have a meeting, weren't you?
I was there at the meeting and I didn't have access to information that Ian had. So I'm just going to pass it over to you to say what you've got to say and then we'll move on to public questions.
Thanks Mr Chairman. I have got an awful lot to say. The Chairman covered quite a bit last week. I just wanted to kind of reiterate the way that we are going to, we're working as a council. You've all come down, maybe has asked some questions and things like that. Where the council works is usually we have working meetings and then things are brought to the council to ratify. That's changing now. We want to be trying, we want to try and be more open to the whole of the community. The working groups, the committees that we had, which were finance and recreation, that's just cutting them down a little bit, but those two groups we now will not be having. We will be having two full council meetings every month. The first Thursday and the third Thursday of the month. One of them will incorporate the recreation and the second one or vice versa will incorporate the finance. So anything that is discussed will be discussed in council meetings and voted. We will probably be having a meeting before that as a council, just in case anything is to be discussed. Any councillor that can't make it, it's nothing against them or anything like that. It's if they can make it for that earlier meeting, then fine, but they will all be filled in. Okay? As a council, we are bound by the seven points of the Nolan principles. I don't know if all of you know about the Nolan principles, but basically one of the main ones that I want to point out is openness. We're going to try as hard as we can to be open with the public, with anything that we're doing. Anything that needs to go to the public for a vote or to see if they want us to go ahead with something, then it will do. Okay? Our intentions as well, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr Chairman, is to get some working groups together as well. And they are going to be open to the public as well as councillors to come in, make recommendations of things that they want doing for the community and then it can be taken to full council. Okay? So when they are advertised, anybody that's interested, obviously everybody that's here today has come down with an interest. So anybody that's interested can apply to join the committees. I'm saying committees, it's a working group, it's not a committee. And they will be chaired by a councillor as well as with the public. Okay? And that's just about all I was going to say, Mr Chairman.
Yeah, thank you.
If anybody's got any questions, please feel free to ask.
So we now move to matters raised from the floor, which basically is public questions. If anybody wants to ask anything. Yes Maxine?
Hi, obviously you all know me. So it was discussed about the meetings before meetings and a few of us said that we couldn't make it. And so after that, we're not including any of the other meetings you've been having down at Water Park. So does that mean you're doing this, it's all we can't come to the, make the decisions, what you're coming to?
I'm not sure I understand the question of that, meetings at the back.
Right, I'll explain again. Right? We explained to you that we can't get here because of work and other commitments and we asked you not to do the early meetings because of this. Because you're making decisions without all of the councillors being there. And, and if you like, the email I sent earlier on, what I was told you'd been doing. So can you please explain why you decided to carry on with this early meeting when you know we can't all get to these meetings?
Well, can I answer that? It's not exactly correct what you're saying. We've agreed that we originally wanted the public exclusion at 6.30 and you made the point that you couldn't get there for that. Now that's important, so we moved it to 7 o'clock. What Ian's just described is an informal meeting, a get together with councillors for those who can make it. And that is all, it's an informal, it won't, yeah, this isn't, it doesn't exclude anyone.
It excludes some councillors who know can't make it.
But I think that quite often there are times when councillors can't make any meeting. If we try to accommodate everyone who was on the council for holidays and all that, we'd have to cancel a lot of meetings.
If I can just say, if I've misled by saying that we're going to have a meeting beforehand, then I apologise. It wasn't, it isn't going to be a meeting where things are going to be decided. It's where we can bat ideas together and possibly anticipate things that are going to come up in public questions. You're probably aware, I don't know if anybody's watched Prime Minister's Question Time, but he's got one Elvis-sized folder and he's got a load of people behind him that know roughly what questions are going to be coming up and he's always prepared. One of the things that is a bit frustrating is if you get sightwinded with a question that you haven't got an answer for. But when I was in medical sales, if I didn't have an answer for a customer, then I would tell them I don't have an answer and that is going to be the same to everybody, whether it's a councillor or whether it's a public. If we don't have an answer, I promise you one thing, we will get you an answer. It won't be instant, but rather than us waffling away and telling you a load of lies, we've no intention of doing that, it's one of the principles of the Nolan principles, honesty. And we're going to try our best to do that. Yeah, you can come back Maxine.
I was just going to note, as the council last year, I sometimes don't look at it on time, to have meetings at 6.30, it's an exclusion of people at work and that's not being fair to people at work. But also additionally to that, you've said that you are holding meetings before to discuss house and business. Am I right, clerk, you say that a councillor to come to a meeting already deciding what's happened is not illegal?
We're not talking about deciding anything.
You've just said that's what you're doing. You've said that's what you're doing.
It's perfectly normal to have informal discussions with anybody. With councillors getting together, a pre-meeting if you like, because issues might have been raised that a lot of people aren't aware of. We can discuss how we're going to deal with it. We are not making decisions in anything other than council meetings, official meetings, and any accusations that we are is simply incorrect.
Well, you need to get Cal to stop sending emails saying stating that you are making decisions.
That's, we're not going there Maxine, I told you about this last time. We're not discussing individual councils in public.
Are we starting all over again?
I called in this morning to speak to the clerk, there was nothing secret about that. It's perfectly normal.
So I get where Maxine's coming from, okay, because I work. And if I was excluded and I was a councillor because I got to earn a living, then I'd be pretty cheesed off. My other question is, so these working groups, there was one set up, I think it was early this year or back end of last year, for light, rec and leisure and it was held on an afternoon. So basically because I worked full time, I couldn't attend it and I wished to attend. So I know working groups are going to be accessible for everybody.
Working groups, when I'm brought in.
Could you let us speak please Maxine?
Well, work evenings, work days or evenings are going to be alternates so that others can attend.
I think what the Vice Chair has described is, is a desire to include all the public. And we can't hold meetings all the time at everybody's convenience, but yes, it's open for discussion. It's not, there's been no decision made on this. It's open for discussion in council meetings for people to come forward and express their views and all that. But how can we accommodate every single person's personal position? We can't. I understand what you're saying and I'm trying to respond to it in that way. We're trying to accommodate for the majority view and if the majority view was that we need to meet at 6 o'clock at night or 2 in the clock, we would go with the majority. We just simply cannot accommodate everybody's individual circumstances. I may have an appointment where I'm going to take my wife to hospital and I have to send my apologies for the meeting. I can't expect the meeting not to go ahead because of that. I know you didn't, I'm just explaining the situation.
What I'm saying is, I'm expressing a desire that I would like to be on one of these working groups.
Happy to come.
And if it's held on an afternoon, that immediately counts me out, isn't it?
Well, I understand what you're saying and I'm happy that you're willing to come forward, but we haven't said when it's going to be or anything.
So that's, that was my question. How are you going to make them accessible?
It's not for my, it's not my decision to make, we want to be accessible to everyone. You're welcome to come along and put your views.
If I'm working, I can't, I still think that's it.
If we are going to be setting up these groups, sorry to interrupt Mr Chairman, if we are going to be setting up these groups, then those questions will be asked of everybody. When would you like to come? I'm quite prepared, there's an awful lot of people, we're here at 7 o'clock this evening for this meeting. I'm quite prepared to do one at 9 o'clock at night. Scott might not like that, but it will be made available to have them afternoon, morning, evening, whenever, so that everybody gets the chance. And that question would be asked of anybody that wants to apply to join these groups. When are you available?
For you.
Okay?
And I would reiterate to that, the only decisions that's ever been made were last Thursday's Town Council meeting. That's the only place for any decisions that have ever been made. One of them being to defer the accounts. So the idea that we've been making decisions anywhere is totally wrong. There's no decisions being made outside of this room. So, you know.
Again, can you tell people to stop emailing that we've made the decision then? I've got the email, what was there? We've made this decision, the logging department made this decision.
If you've got emails where somebody said the name.
You know I have, I've sent it.
Can you let me speak Maxine and stop, please stop interrupting. You can, you put your hand up and I'll bring you in, but let me finish. You've asked me a question and I'm going to answer it.
You're not answering it correctly, can I answer it?
Yes please, can go ahead.
We had a meeting on Monday, we went to the council, we walked around the water park, Maxine walked away with councillors thinking the meeting had finished. We were still talking, discussing what to pack and what we could do and what we couldn't bring. We noticed the buzzers on the gate, I sent the, I sent a message and I worded it wrong, but we had agreed. Maxine's took it and twisted it.
No I haven't took it and twisted it.
You have took it and twisted it Maxine.
Will you not interrupt please Maxine?
No I haven't. We noticed the buzzer wasn't working on the gate. Me as well as the public did not know this buzzer worked on the gate. So we both spoke about it and we decided it needed an ending, it needed a sign up to say this buzzer worked, you press it to win, you press it to go out. I put that in an email to all of us and to Alan and Maxine's turned it and I worded it wrong, I had to agree. I have emailed Alan this morning asking Alan if he can put signage on the gate because it needs to for health and safety and for the public. And Alan has agreed to go down, look at the signage and put signage up where it's needed.
And that was not a decision, I saw you Rob, I'll bring you in in a minute, but all we agreed because I was there, that a sign would be useful, that is not a decision. And then Alan informed me this morning that there used to be a sign up there and weren't to where it'd be falling off and he's agreed to replace it. I just don't see where that is a problem, that was not a decision. We agreed each sign would be useful for people and that's all, that is not a decision. Did you want to come in there Rob?
Is that the little old gate round Windmill? Is it the little gate?
Yeah.
It's the individual gate, the single gate.
But why do you just get them gates up anyway, it's the rest of the town.
I won't disagree with that, but it's a subject that we're going to, we're looking at all of that. I do, yeah. I don't understand why they're there.
People walking out all the way, you're going to get killed down there. Because you can't walk floors.
I didn't, I didn't know there was a button on there till Ian pointed it out.
There was, some people approached the gate and pushed it and thought they couldn't get in. And I just told them to go back and just press the button and just wait a few seconds and the gate will be released. Then somebody came from the opposite direction and never even prompted them. They pressed the button and the gate was released within 10 seconds. The, the gate in my opinion isn't a problem as long as everybody knows that all you need to do is press the buzzer. As soon as you press the buzzer, there's an audible buzzer goes off in the cafe and they press a button to release the gate, but nobody knows about that Rob.
It's all wired to a gate then, what I'm saying, should we go inside and say, oh is it why we want to go in?
I don't even know if they.
So that's the gate then? So Alan's going to tell them to come in and out, come in and out, why not just, why did, they never needed the gate, why did they need it? What's on here?
It is something that we'll have to discuss in the future.
Yeah, then you're welcome.
I can answer that question, I've been stood in the lakeside when Jackie's let somebody in. Somebody pushes the button, Jackie pushes the button inside, they just let them in. There's no question of who are you, if you stood at that gate and the lakeside's open, they open the gate for you automatically.
Why is it working? It's supposed to be working, it's trying to put a button, can't say because.
It's literally right next to her. It's whoever stood at the counter, the screen and the release button is right next to them. So it's, I've watched them do it, it's two seconds. Presses a button and it releases the gate.
I understand your question Rob and I can't give you an answer because I don't know why.
It means you're certainly taking time for the gate, that's what I'm getting.
Absolutely.
She just looks like she's wanting to press the button, oh what I mean.
I take your point in and we are going to be looking at all these things.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not initial to Alan, but what I'm saying is what's it there for?
Well, like I said, if I could answer that, I would. I really would, because it's a question that I would.
Mr Chairman, not to be pedant, but it's a meeting for the electors of the parish.
Yeah, sorry, but we're getting away from the, we shouldn't be later discussing it because it's a Town, it's Town Council business and this is effectively a parish meeting and we should be discussing parishes. I know that they're overspilling, but anyway, I can't answer your question anymore than what I have done. So have we got any more? Yes, can?
We've had quite a few people on social media saying that they're not aware of the Town Council meetings. I know it's on HTC website, but someone was asking if we actually put it on HTC's Facebook page so that people are aware that there are these meetings taking place and also post the agenda. I know the likes of myself and Lyn try and post them on as many sites as possible, but people are still actually saying that they are not aware of these meetings taking place. And what the, what they're saying, again, coming back to the notice boards, but equally can HTC's, be posted on HTC's Facebook page?
Good suggestion and I don't see any reason why not.
And also can we make sure that we, I know we've got a district councillor here tonight, we've got Jacob here, can we also invite the other districts?
Yeah, I think Jake can tell you that he's aware of that and they're trying to chase it up. I think it's the planning department that's holding up, but it's not actually planning, it's advertising.
Yes, the advertising is a problem. The notice boards have been longer than expected. The, the meetings are always advertised on the front door of the building here, but that's not always adequate. A good idea to put it on the Facebook page and if we all can share it, then that's fair enough.
I know, but you do, Maxine does, Lyn does, I share one of the groups that are obviously active.
With respect, the notice boards when they do go are going to be a big benefit. It's not everybody's on social media, appreciate that and everything will go out.
Yeah, can you just talk up there on the notice board situation?
I've been told to put the microphone away from her, is that better? Rob, just a bit off you, on the notice boards. Yeah, the Wakefield needed, well, not plan permission per se, but was caused advertising consent, but it's the same form, same process for the two notice boards, the council board, one for the precinct down here and one in front of the Fitzwilliam Centre. And then Wakefield said to get trustment draws for them, so they've drawn, they've now been got and the applications will be going in, well the draws will be going in shortly. Also, we've written to Kinser Craft Workshop to ask for permission to put possibly a full notice board on their building. They haven't got a problem with that and they've said they want to refer to Wakefield though, as Wakefield is the landlord. Also as well, the Kinser Resource Centre, they've agreed, they've agreed to put our agendas on their notice board. So one half of it now is not being placed out for about a month, so all of the agendas will be on there. So after a couple of months' time, we'll be consenting by Wakefield Council with a four sets of notice boards.
Can I just say, Alan, there's a notice board down at the Water Park as well. Could we put one on there as well, because a lot of people just walk into Water Cafe, you'll see the notice board and that'll be a little bit more advertising.
Are you encouraged Cathy?
I just look at what people are putting on social media and if they, if they don't know.
We do appreciate it, I mean, it's not our intention to restrict public information or when we're having meetings. As many people as possible that come to these meetings are more than merrier at the far end.
But I think there's one thing as well, when you're saying like tonight, it's like, I didn't know actual time of meeting, when's the end of the Town Council and it only shows you dates, doesn't actually show time. So the next one, Lyn's Facebook page can actually get the minutes for it to show at the top, it was 7 o'clock. It doesn't actually say any time.
Well, I can only apologise on behalf of the council for that error because the council.
Was it, was it that that you saw on it? Because it has, does have the time on it.
Yeah, no, but when you have to look on the calendar that shows.
Oh right, I'm with you.
So when you look upon the end of Town Council Facebook, website and it shows the dates of meetings, it shows, yeah, meetings on this date, this date, but it doesn't show your time. So when you've got to research up after they're getting this paperwork up, you see a time of what it actually says.
Clerk, can you maybe just answer this? If you actually clicked on that time, will it bring up a different page, doesn't it? Sorry, never tried.
There'll be a different section of the website. But what's a fair, probably can do is add a little note to the calendar saying that the default time for meetings is 7 o'clock on a Saturday.
Especially if it's going to start changing, if you're going to have a bit slower meetings before.
No, I think. Come on, they always start 7 o'clock.
The times won't change, but it's a fair point and we're trying to address these issues as they come up and make it as much public aware of what.
I'd say it's just that I end up having to research up a little bit.
The website, unless you know what you're looking for, it is quite difficult to navigate. I know I have to, I know the website is quite difficult to navigate. If you don't know what you're looking for, it is a little confusing. I've, I've actually had to say to people, right, if you want to look at, fine, I'd always step by step to people. This is what you click on, then you click on that, then you click on that and then you click on that and everything else. So, you know, it is, unless you know what you're looking for, it is a little difficult. And that's what people are saying, if it was on HTC's Facebook page, it's there, everybody knows what we're looking at.
We want to make it as user-friendly as we can. Jake, do you want to come in then?
Yeah, I'm going to, well, once I've organised all my searches, I'm going to send them to you for how we all the details are. I'm happy to also include the times of the Town Council meetings, days, you know, that's the first and third Thursday of the month and the times as well and that a little outside, all that's ever happened in the world.
I do appreciate that, thanks. Like I said, there's much information we can add there, we will, yes Liam?
Just a thought, we could have a chat with the IT company about restructuring the navigation on the website. It might be that we can make it a bit more user-friendly if somebody has a look at it from a technical point of view.
Absolutely, we'll certainly do that. Yes Linda?
Thank you, can you?
Yes.
I was just wondering along the lines of Lyn's just said about technical capabilities. I don't know what our website, our HTC website is capable of, but most websites have links for that. If you went into Metallldome, it is a normal place to go when you see the meetings from the, if you had a link in there on, on the, on the dates or whatever, that took you through to the agenda, that would be really good, wouldn't it? It's not novel because lots of other companies have used it for 10 years. I was just wondering if it's possible.
Yeah, I'm sure it's entirely possible, it's just.
Yeah. After showing time, so when you've got to research up after then getting this paperwork up, you see a time of what it actually says.
Clark, can you maybe just answer this? If you actually clicked on that time, will it bring up a different page? Doesn't it? Sorry.
There'll be a different section of the website. But what's a fair, what we can do is add a little note to the calendar saying that the default time for meetings is seven o'clock on a July day.
Especially if it's going to start changing, if you're going to have a bit slower meetings before.
No, I think- No, it starts seven o'clock.
The times won't change. But it's a fair point and we're trying to address these issues as they come up and make it as much public aware of what matters.
I'd say it's just that I end up having to research up a little bit.
The website, unless you know what you're looking for, it is quite difficult to navigate. I know I have to. I know the website is quite difficult to navigate. If you don't know what you're looking for, it is a little confusing. I've actually had to say to people, right, if you want to look at, fine, I'd always step by step to people. This is what you click on, then you click on that, then you click on that, and then you click on that and everything else. So, you know, it is, unless you know what you're looking for, it is a little difficult. And that's what people are saying. If it was on HTC's Facebook page, it's there. Everybody knows what they're looking at.
Absolutely. We want to make it as user-friendly as we can. Jake, do you want to come in then?
Yeah, I'm going to be in, well, once I've organised all my searches. I'm going to send them a leaflet, have all the details on, I'm happy to also include the times of the town council meetings. Days, you know, that's the first, the first day of the month, and the times as well and that, a little outside, all that sort of house in the one.
I do appreciate that, yeah. Thanks. Like I said, there's much information to get out there. We will. Yes, Lyn?
Just a thought, we could have a chat with the IT company about restructuring the navigation on the website. It might be that we can make it a bit more user-friendly if somebody has a look at it from a technical point of view.
Absolutely. We'll certainly do that. Yes, Linda?
Thank you. Can you?
Yes.
I was just wondering along the lines of Lyn's just said about technical capabilities. I don't know what our website, our HTC website is capable of, but most websites have links for that. If you went into Metallldome, it is a normal place to go when you see the meetings from the, if you had a link in there on the, on the dates or whatever, that took you through to the agenda, that would be really good, wouldn't it? It's not novel because lots of other companies have used it for ten years. I was just wondering if it's possible.
Yeah, yeah.
Cast their teeth for them, yeah.
I'm sure it's entirely possible. It's just, we're certainly, well, Alan's going to look at that and we'll let you know what we get from that. Sorry, I can see. Yeah, go on.
So from last year's town meeting, I raised the contact for the accessible play equipment in Playworld. Alan, you replied that if you run BC, it means funding this. So I ran further forward on accessible play equipment.
Wakefield asked for a couple of quotes from different firms which were obtained and which were sent to Wakefield a few months ago. But it's been a slow process. I don't know if it takes away any progress on that. To effect, I'm just saying, officers, it's only been a few days. But the two quotes were sent to the ward councillors over a few months ago now.
FDA?
Chase that up, we're going to find out what's happening. Although there is some accessible play equipment quote in Valehead Park.
Yeah, that's to be at DC.
Don't know, but I will chase that up until it's long. There's going to be some in Valehead as well.
Oh, the law is that, but-
Maxine, Rob?
Can I just tell that Jack said you were chasing it up? I wonder, we asked Jack, Jack anyway, was that him? Oh, he did say you were going to chase it up.
Anyone else? Sorry, Lyn, yeah, go on.
Yeah, going, going back to obviously the website as well. Could we look at putting something so that people know where they actually report things to? It's a bit like flytipping, et cetera, et cetera. People automatically think that it's the HTC, that the local councillor should be doing it. When really it's reporting it to Wakefield. We ought to be looking at just highlighting what responsibilities are HTC and what Wakefield. So people know, and again, where they report things to. If you report something, they do action it. It's just a case of people don't know where to report things to. It's a bit like the pattern meeting. Again, you know, they don't realise that if there's antisocial behaviour, report it to the police, et cetera, and something will be done rather than just moaning about it on, on social media. People need to start being proactive.
Believe me, Karen, as a district councillor as well as my older role, I'm perfectly well aware and agree with what you're saying. We get the blame for things. It's not our responsibility and flytipping, they don't know. And I'm sure we can put that information out. There is a contact number for street scene, which should be the first thing. And if you don't get this, then it, your district councils or whatever. But that depends on whose land the flytipping's on sometimes. I can't win anything about it. I'm sure you're aware of that. But yeah, I'm sure we can put that information out. And happy to do so. Yes?
My name is the chairman. I went down to the water park, first time in a long time, a weekend. That is absolutely atrocious. You know, there were people there which, you know, which gives nothing to play on. You know, I know Waterpark, other lots have delayed that for a reason. I don't know why. But Valehead Park, that needs hotmail up as soon as possible. Wakefield Council only know this area when they want us to pull, it's council tax. Anything else, we've to fight for it.
Well, I take that on board and I referred to it last week and Maxine's already referred to the meeting we had on Monday. And I can assure you that the deputy leader was, it was pointed out to him that Valehead Park needs finishing off. And it's not progressing.
I said, for six months in a year.
Yeah, farmers are worried that you can't last that long.
For six months in a year and it's still not open running. It's disgusting now. I'll tell you what, to cook grass down there, they'll have to get farmers to cook it.
Yeah, I've been down there on a regular basis myself and there's a lot to do. And like I said, I spoke about it last Thursday at the first meeting we had. There's a hell of a lot. It's been suffered from neglect and lack of maintenance. And it's going to take a lot of work and money to bring it back up and it's not going to happen overnight, you know. But incidentally, it was mentioned to me by a fellow councillor that the gate over the bridge, is it? That is locked, the padlocked. It's inaccessible to people like Kevin in it because I don't think the padlock even needs a radar key in it.
No, I don't think so.
So. It's the gate over the bridge. I think you're supposed to have access as well. I'm not sure I'm that.
You've got access to it to take one of the vans over.
Yeah.
Oh, the Holbert Bridge, yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
The other one I've got, yeah, one of them.
My proposal, and I don't see any reason why that gate shouldn't be open all day. Because for an disabled person, even if it had a radar key, it's not easy to open the padlock and pull the gate open when you're sat in it. So I don't know if I can add to those that tonight on.
I think I've got to counter genuinely.
Okay, so we'll put it on the council.
Have they already put this on meeting, Alan?
What's that?
Have they already put this on in meetings?
I've had a lot of emails from you and I kind of call off top of my head, what are you pointing them?
Oh, I'm sending it there just to remind you that this is what I've already put in.
Well, that's a good idea, right? Yeah. So we'll discuss it as next council meeting. Hopefully we can have that gate open all day.
Don't mind, Mr Chairman. Regarding the Playworld, I think it's very unfortunate that we've had to close that for to do some remedial work on it with instructions from the insurers. And at the same time, Valehead Park was closed, where they're doing some work as well. I think it's been very, very unfortunate that both things have happened at the same time. But it's unavoidable, unfortunately. And obviously Rob's losing a bit of business on that, I'm afraid. Sorry. But. I don't know about that. Correct me if I'm wrong, Alan, but I believe it will be open for the summer holiday.
Oh, yeah, definitely, yeah.
Yeah, for the summer holiday, but unfortunately it's not going to be available for Springbank holiday.
I know, too, when that, when that bell has gone, you're going to do the right.
No, no doubt.
I think what we've got to understand is, I think what we've got to understand is, obviously, Wakefield are upgrading all of the parks in the area. And they've got a list and they're all in, in a certain order. So there'll be other councils that have this, that's had this experience that haven't been happy. Because it's been, it's been ongoing now for two years of upgrading all, all this. So it's, it's just very, very unfortunate.
It's never a good time to do it, but it has to be done and hopefully we'll get the benefit of it when it is done. Yes, Shaun?
Just a couple of questions real quick. So the first one is, and I appreciate it, first time as chair, few days as chair, and other councillors have not been on very long, but you did have a long time of preparing. What is this council's actual vision, what's its statement for the upcoming four years? And the second to that question is, I think you all appreciate that due to people outstanding that this is probably the most undemocratic elected council in Hensford Town Council at the moment, just because people didn't stand. Would some new current councillors and members of the public like to hold their hand up and say they are partly responsible due to the social media comment they've taken on false profiles?
I don't understand the latter part of that, Shaun, because I-
But I'll not ask, I'll be doing that on false profiles. Someone in your mate, that's fine, but we're still part of feeding those profiles of the various, all hundred percent.
Can I just say this, Shaun? When it comes to social media, I don't partake of it. It's no business of this council or people doing social media. But I did describe last week what we were aiming at and it's, what we want is public-led participation. You know, we want to deliver what the public want more than anything.
Public-led participation is great, but again, what I've been aiming is, we're going to let the public side, we're going to let the public side, which the Hensford Council, ineffective, it seems like.
No, I think that's a misrepresentation of what I actually said. We want public involvement and they can influence that, you know. The only thing we said on public is, on certain issues, we want full public meetings and listen to them. At the end of the day, we're not absolving our responsibility to make decisions. But we represent this community and the community should be involved in it. So, and that's all I've said. I've not said we're going to put it all in the public. We have to say, we've got to be accountable for what we do and what we say. And that's what we intend to do, but we'll be guided by public opinion. I think that's a reasonable stance to take. Yes, Lyn?
Do you want to answer the question? About who are responsible for this?
If I can just- If I can just maybe speak for myself here. When I first, when I came on to the council on the 29th of September, I've been on. I do apologise for jumping in there, but you're next. I came on on the 29th of September, which is eight months ago. I immediately set up a surgery in the council chambers, the first Monday of every month. And invited people down to come and speak to me about the problems, anything I could help with. The first month I sat up there twiddling my thumbs for over an hour. The second month, somebody did come down and we chatted for about an hour and a half, one of the problems. The third one I did, I sat with Scott for the whole hour. Nobody turned up. I think the fourth one, Lyn came on to council and she came with me and joined in. If nobody can be bothered to come down and have a chat, then I have to assume that not very many people have got problems. They can approach me anywhere. They can approach me in the supermarket, in the pub, in council chambers, anywhere if they've got any problems. And if I can help, I will. If I can't help, I'll point them in the right direction. But if they can't respond to my invite, then I have to assume that there's not very many problems. But then sometimes when you go on to social media, people are being slagged off, they're not doing this, they're not doing that, they're not doing the other. And we can all, we're all human. We can only do our best. And I'll give that invite again. And my other three colleagues from south and west have been invited as well to join us, to come to the surgery once a month. But come and talk to us anytime. And I think I can speak for all councillors. Come and talk to the councillors.
So that's good. It's something that Maxine self on a, out of-
Yeah, I know you've done it, Shaun, and I know Maxine does it as well.
I don't understand how that's a question to ask. That's not answering the question I'm asking. I asked the council, not letting anybody, due to this, getting them all some democratic play, like to the council or placing-
Oh, no, I agree, I agree with Shaun. When I came on, I instigated, sorry, chairman, I instigated an election. I got the names together and instigated election because I didn't think it was correct that the council, a councillor is elected unopposed. Now, when it came to this May's election, there was fifteen seats and there was fifteen names put up. So unfortunately, those fifteen councillors have been elected unopposed. One of the good things that's happened regarding that is it saved the pre-septs from paying something in the region of thirteen and a half thousand quid. Because the people in the community have to pay for those elections. And that's the only good thing that's come out of it.
If you still don't answer the question, our current councillors, and you're right for yourself, would admit their responsibility for the stuff they were putting on social media, on the false profiles, the way they were feeding, how things were going, are they prepared to admit their past, how small I've been, in ensuring that people didn't want to stand? Is what I'm going to get to. Not you fully, you say the-
I'm not aware of that, Shaun. I can't answer it, but I think Lyn wants to say something.
Yeah.
No, I know you don't. I'll answer the question. When Ferret first started posting, I thought, oh, this is good, this is interesting. I don't like that it's anonymous, but it's good, it's interesting stuff. And then it gradually descended into being-
Anonymous about fairness and all this sort of-
Yes, I know, let me finish, Shaun. And it did, in my opinion, drop in quality and start becoming about attacking people individually and personally. It involved people's families, which was absolutely unacceptable. And I messaged Ferret and said that I thought it was unacceptable and got no response. Now, we've also had a number of other profiles that have done similar things, some of them really quite foul. As I said, I supported Ferret in the beginning and then I said, no, I'm not supporting this anymore. It's wrong. Look what it's encouraging. And personally, I'm sorry I ever have anything to do with Ferret because I think it's done nothing but encourage other people to be rude and objectionable and hide behind fake accounts. And if I never see another one of them again, I'll be more than happy. So that's my perspective.
And as you said, you did that and that's fine. And then you were attracted yourself and you actually put it as then, I might be not doing this to his person. I mean, personally, if that was not the reason I didn't stand because I actually enjoyed getting two and five with her. But I don't know of other people who wouldn't stand. And that was the main reason. Why should I put myself up with lost a dangle councillor? What the main reasons is?
I absolutely agree with what you're saying there, Shaun, because I do know-
Is there people in this room now who are prepared to admit their thinking about it? It doesn't seem to bother them themselves.
All I can say to that is I never posted anything on social media. I didn't listen to it. But I do understand because it does, it dissuades people. People, good people, want to come and serve the community. They don't want to suffer abuse. Yeah, please go ahead.
Can I just say, is this word? Can I just say, I only came here today because last week, right, I washed it back and I thought your behaviour towards Maxine were absolutely disgusting. But when you spoke to her, were absolutely disgusting. And I think you've got a thing about women. I really do. And then when it came to that final vote, where it was your choice, it was obvious you were going to pick him.
Well, I don't know. It was obvious, but you're entitled to your opinion.
It is.
I certainly disagree with it, but I'm entitled to mine.
You shut people down straight away. It was like deja vu. It was like watching Jean again. You were like, here we go again, here we go again, the same thing again, same scenario.
Well, I think I got frustrated a bit as well.
Watch the video back and watch it then on it. Just watch it then on it. You were like, no, no, let's do this, let's do this.
I'm not prepared, and I still maintain that I'm not prepared to see this meeting descending to abuse, councillors abusing each other like we used to witness before. It is not going to happen and we stick to the business of this council.
No, but you were shouting and gobbing at her.
I don't think I was shouting at anybody.
And I thought email and-
Well, you made your point. You made your point. Obviously you did.
I comment on things in my maiden name. And I actually commented on that news and views about his behaviour. And I use it in my own name.
I put it in my own name. I'm not saying that was sending you a wrong hand to be on then. These people put something in their own name whilst they're field, their tone, the way they're speaking and what they said should say. Yes, you heard what this man said.
Because I commented on yours then, and I came here today because I actually do do it in my own name. I thought it was disgusting, your behaviour last week. And you obviously trained me and said, coming from nowhere, because we know that you're from South Kirby Town Council, and to come from that and hope you said like you did last week, that's disgusting.
You made your point. I've heard it. I disagree with it, but that's-
You don't like how to female. That's why you don't like. Yeah, I won't sit down.
Thank you very much.
Find yourself. No, you shouldn't pardon that.
So my tangents then to social media. So on social media on certain sites, when they add a financial audit, which a previous councillor, there was a chair and the vice chair, went through all that, went through a lot of work. And then on social media, it was stated about, we want a financial audit, we want a proper audit. And they really bunged for the chair and the vice chair of finance. But then last week, you came out with, well, we're going to put it to the public and see what they want because it costs a lot of money. So for me, there were people on that site commenting about, we want the financial audit and their councillors now. But yet, you know, it's been backtracked, it's, let's put it to the public instead of, right, I blated on about the financial audits, I said I wanted one, mashed gear, blah, 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 it should someplace. So now I'm a councillor, it should be a financial audit, because that was my beliefs at that time. So that's how I feel about that, so.
I can't, I've already said that when it comes to social media, I don't partake in social media. And we did have this discussion last week, and I explained the situation. We're not saying there's not going to be a financial audit or there isn't.
Yeah, I said it wrong.
Forensic, we haven't ruled it out.
No, but you're going to put it to public.
We said, but we'll do a survey and be guided by that, because it's a lot of money, it's a, it's an expensive thing, and it may not produce results, it may do.
The previous chair of finance said it was an awful lot of money, and the vice chair of finance said it was, and then went ahead with what was suitable at that time, and it needs.
I've not criticised any of that.
Pardon?
I've not criticised any of that.
Well, I beg to differ.
Well, I haven't.
So, I mean, I've read it, there's qualified councillors on board now, so are they forensic auditors? Have they got that qualification?
Like I said, I haven't, I haven't rejected anything, nobody, no decisions have been made. We just said we consult with the public. If you don't want me to consult, if you don't want the council to consult with the public, I think there's a lot of people who would disagree with that. Yes, Cathy?
Everyone knows my feelings on the forensic audit. A forensic audit should have taken place right from the beginning, not using just an accountant. The forensic auditor is a total different qualification. My personal opinion is that the forensic audit still needs to take place. Yes, I, I am one of, I am one of those parishioners, the councillor who has actually put, brought things to the councillor's attention, what I found. And I'm still asking questions and I'm still looking at things. So yes, I do believe that a forensic audit should take place. I know personally what a forensic auditor can do and where they can go. Yes, there may be certain forensic auditors that say that they can't look in certain places. But personally, I know what they can request and what they can't. And regarding Shaun, if, if, if you were referencing myself, whatever I have put on, on Ferret has been fact. I'm, I'm, you know, I stand by everything that I have put. I don't hide behind anything, and if you've got a problem with that, then I'm sorry.
No, let's, let's not, let's not go there. Like I said, I've, I've given my opinion on social media, I don't get it, so I'm not aware of it anyway. But you've expressed your opinion, you're in favour of a forensic audit, the lady over there is fed it. And there are ways of communicating with the council, you could email the clerk and express your opinions on whatever, you know. And we will take that into consideration. You know, it's, I've never stated anywhere whether I've rejected it or not, it's just, people need to be aware of what it costs and what it likely to reduce or not, and I don't know that, I know it's going to cost a lot of money.
Also, are you going to make a decision on that?
Well, after five days of being in the chair, and I outlined this last Friday, yeah, last Thursday, you know, we don't want to delay on it, but it just, you know, it's, it, it, five days into, into this council, you know, we could probably, we'll be better informed at the next council meeting. But if they meet it, if you want to express your opinion, please write to the clerk and let them know, or you can email your councillors, you know. And if there's public support for it, then we'll do it.
I just wondered the timescale, if, I mean, obviously as chair, you must be in staff to plan things and discuss things with other councillors and say, well, this is a high priority, this is a low priority.
It is a priority, it's been, it was a decision deferred to this council that, and I think it's been pointed out by certain people, we're, we're on a learning curve, there's a lot, a lot of information to absorb, and some training, and we don't want to make bad decisions or the wrong decisions. But I'm aware that it's, it's urgent and there's a timescale on it, but I don't know what that is at the moment, except to say, it is, we do recognise it as a priority. Yes, Maxine?
So can we start getting it out to public, so we can have this survey straight away and then we can get it done before the price goes up?
Well, we'll. If you consider, like I said, that we had our first meeting last Thursday, you know, could we have at least a bit, bit of leeway on, and when we can, we have, we have discussed it, how, how we can have a survey, you know, I've just suggested that you can write to the clerk or any councillor and we'll collect that information. Yes, Shaun?
So you just said this in your first, oh, last week was your first official meeting, I told the beachhead, and, but when you wasn't, you had to do a camp. When you had the campaign, you had meetings which, fully appreciate, fully agree, that didn't discuss these things then, so we could hit the ground running.
We tried, we, we didn't all know each other very well, we wanted to get to know each other one direction, sorry?
Appreciate that, but, you know, you had like four, four weeks, four weeks.
We didn't meet every day or every week.
I'm not saying you did, I'm not saying you did all of that, that's what you want to say, I'm saying you had, you must have several meetings, three or four to my knowledge. Did you start to formulate a plan and, and, and knowing the manner of the chair decided then, I totally appreciate that.
Well, like I said, I don't, I don't think you were there last week, Shaun, but I described.
I was watching from social media.
Then you'll know that I described what, what, what we did. We wanted to have a consensus in that it was not a labour control council, it was, we were all, we tried to include everybody, and everybody's agreed to that, but we didn't, we didn't have access, we, we were not, we weren't officially councillors at that point, we didn't, we weren't allowed to see information and things like that.
And as I said, I appreciate that, but surely you start to formulate the ideas of a plan, which sounds like you haven't.
Well, I'm sorry, but I think we have formulated the forward plan in the direction, but there's no detail to it because we haven't.
So the first answer to your question was, what's this council's like mission for the next four years? If you sort of start formulating, while maybe you're not able to finalize it, you can surely give us a steer on what you want us to do in the next.
Well, I think Dan's done that, and I think I did it on Thursday. If you don't accept that, I don't know what else to say to you. No, there's no detailed plan, there's no.
I'm not to agree with you because I feel you've not given us a steer, uh, but yeah, that's fine, that's answered.
You agree to what, did you say?
I'm not to agree to disagree because I feel you've not given us a steer as to what your, this council's priorities are in the next four years, other than we're going to ask the public. That's all we're, we're going to ask the public.
Well, I disagree with that and I've explained that, but you're entitled to your opinion and that.
Yeah, well, can I say something else?
Yes, go ahead, then.
Well, for a start off, it's going to take you a hell of a long time to get this communities back together again. And when you get enough money back, if you ever get enough money back, what's been wasted, so it's going to be very, very hard work for you. We know you've got to be honest and, and everything with this, and I think you will be. Um, the darkness, what some people say, you know, it don't matter, as long as you work out like you are for community. It's, um, the ones that, I mean, I worked at your last meeting, so I don't know what happened anyway. Um, and I'm trying to, I think you're doing as best you can now, and it's going to take time, like you said, to let everybody know. I mean, um, I don't do Facebook and things like that, but I listen to the community. And that's what you'll do, you listen to the community, see what they're saying and work together. We've asked for meetings, we've asked for people to come and see you at different times, whenever they can. And if they're working, like you say, you're making it, so it's, um, it's okay, but it's going to take you a hell of a long time. I'm not saying years, obviously, it's going to be feel like years, to get everything straight to what they made a mess of. And, um, and I don't, and I'll say it to the faces, so I'm not bothered, it don't matter to me either, or. But I think you'll, you know, you're going to have a hard job, but I think you'll do it. And you'll do it that, you'll listen to the public if they're not, um, you know, if they're top property here and, and everything, and if they want to prove what they're doing, put it down in writing and, and whatever. Um, but, um, I think it, it's going to take time. And I wish I hadn't been at last meeting, but I learned.
Well, unfortunately, but can I just say, and, and thank you very much for your comments, I'm encouraged by that. But, um, I, I think people need to, and the rest of the councillors, they give up their own free time to do this. It's not a full-time job, you know, and they're willing to give as much time, and it, and it's taking a lot of time, it really is, you know, more than we should have to do, but we accept that and we're willing to do that. But, you know, to say that we've take, we're dragging our heels and all that, we don't meet every day, we don't discuss. I've got a, a work-life balance, you know, I'm a district councillor, I've got a disabled wife, I've got, I can't just abandon everything and, and nobody can, no. But there is a, a good spirit amongst the.
At least you're sober.
No, not always, but our, our commitment is honest. And, 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 and that's it, and we're all friends and neighbours, all, you know.
Well, I don't know, I'm not your neighbour, so I don't know about that.
As far as hens with the community goes, I think they're all friends and all try to be.
Well, this is it, it's, it's, um, well, I've had a lot of stuff thrown at me over the years, and I mean terrible stuff. And, um, I wish I had for it to be true, because it'd have been weird.
It's an unfortunate side of it, you can't please everybody at all times, and some people like the sound of their own voice and all that business, and I accept that, you know. I'm not going to be, I didn't mean you, Cathy. Sorry, but yeah, go ahead.
It's just going back to what you do with social media, um, the Red Sand Gate for Kids is closed on a weekend at, at short notice. Just wondering if there's anywhere that it can be put on Facebook so that parents are aware. Huh?
Can I just say, I appreciate your question, that what we, what, and we're certainly not against it, I'm for it, there's much information across the area that we can get, we're all in favour of that. But of course, I've said it, you're going to attend to that for us, Scott, and there you go.
But maybe someday should I, I may get this, just even update it for you.
I think Kevin, you just let Kevin go in then.
Yeah, sorry about that, um, I was going to say, I don't know, I mean, and, and we've probably asked it with public, we looked at that, we're actually involved with them, asking them all along.
Well.
I think, no, I'll second, but, but I'll put it this way, kind of vague, the last lot, if then there was too public and put it out to public, we wouldn't have had to pass a tool, bend the voice, constantly, you know, and I don't really have it. But what was the cost? What was the cost?
I hope you asked truly few councillors from when you said the last lot.
Well, you know what I mean?
I think we're all aware of that, Kevin, but.
And again, though, the last lot, what's happened the last year, promising openness, transparency, is a, you know, to put it to public, make them enter, there's no way that it's done.
I think public exclusion became more busy than, than, than public meetings, you know, it wasn't, it was, we're going to minimalise.
I think they're still paying that then, that they should have paid that.
The Venga Boys, the gross cost would have been about seventy thousand, and then cancel, I think, cost about eighteen, it got, cost a count, eighteen thousand, I think, for something.
We could have had some good audits, what else?
And I think, uh, I certainly appreciate what, what were known as the good councillors in the last lot, and I appreciate the, the work that they did, and we just want to try and continue with that. You know, and I think it, unfortunately, and I, I just want to say this, I'm at thirty-two years of service to this council, should be recognised, and I didn't get the chance to say it before because I wanted the chair and he weren't here, but we do recognise that.
Oh, well, that.
And everybody that, that opposed what was happening, it's, I think the, the, the community all thanks for that, you know, and we're trying to continue that. And I welcome Shaun's comments and input, and everybody that was involved in it, because we want it, and I said, I don't know what else I can say to that, but that's our motivation and that's, and it, and it's an honest one.
Put it like this, all I ever did was for community.
And I can tell you that this council is only acting in the best interests of its community, that's our only.
I did, and I still, uh, you know, uh, well, they were all kicking on my door the other day about stuff, but anyway, that's why I'm back.
To going back to the point Kevin made, I don't understand how I'm not involved, how involving the public is a bad thing.
No, it's.
And we can't be pushed into making quick decisions on something that's dragged on, I mean, you pointed out last week. I know you haven't, I'm not making accusations like you, Shaun, I accept it.
I'm not saying me, nobody said that, nobody said involving the public is not a good idea. What we're saying, we just, you, they come across, if you say, oh, let's give it out to the public, we don't want to make a decision.
I wasn't inferring that you said that at all, you know, and it's, it's my opinion, and when Kevin said it, it's got to be a good thing. And the other thing is, we, there's a lot of information we haven't got, and if we, if we get pressured into making the wrong decision, then we'll have to be accountable, we won't get thanked for that either, so.
One, one of the frustrating things, I, I think Shaun will probably back me up with this, is the length of times, the length of time that things take to be done. Um, when you get asked a question or asked to do something, or we instigate something, the notice boards is a, is a prime example, how long that has taken for to get it, get your planning permission, this, that and the other. Um, there's still not, and that's, what, nine months, something like that now. Unfortunately, things do take a little bit of time. If anybody comes to us and asks, um, hopefully, they're not going to expect us to do something yesterday, because it's not going to happen, I'm afraid. Depending on what it is, there's, there's hoops and hurdles that we've got to go over to get things done. Um, and that's one of the frustrating things, because you want to do things as quickly as possible.
It's longer than nine months, though, a lot, a lot longer.
Well, that, that's just one example, yeah.
But it is though, it, it, they used, I mean, Lakefield Council, thanks, I won't win to that bit. But they were both as bad, you know, the slot that we were trying to get them to do it, and Lakefield that said they wouldn't put it up, but it won't, where you go about it, you go about it like you're doing now, and you're doing it properly, it could get done quicker, just simple as that. There's places have agreed that you can put signs up, you know, and, um, the, Lakefield was saying you want planning permission, but I won't tell you what, tell me I want planning permission for, but it's.
We are, we are pressing to get it, to get it sorted out, it has to. Did you want to say something, Shaun?
I was going to, well, I said to her, not, not sort of what you're trying to get to regarding, you see, you want to make the public make all the decisions, it takes long enough as it is. But now, and I'm not saying you don't involve the public, it needs to be quicker on involvement of the public, if the public is making decisions, it needs to be quicker because it takes long enough as it is.
I agree.
And, and I'm not being defensive, Shaun, but like I said, after five days, it's, uh, I appreciate what you're saying, and we are, as much time as we've got available, each individual, we are pushing it, you know, there's just so many things.
But, um, I mean, uh.
But if you want to help us speed it up by writing in and letting us know what your views are, that would help. Sorry, yes, yes.
Hey, yeah, sorry, just an observation point, uh, it seems to say here, and I didn't get involved very much in the meetings, but I'm just sorry, I'm not going to comment on what they did right or did wrong, that's, that's not the observation, I think the observation is, I can see from what Shaun's saying and from what yourself say, I think you both actually have the same thing. I think the problem is, is for whatever reason, the last council lost a lot of trust from the public. So the new councillors are trying to gain that, that trust and respect back by diverting a lot of decisions to the council. And it may be that as an overcompensation, I'm not saying it is, I'm saying it may be perceived that as an overcompensation because you want the trust back of the public, that the public don't need, and that's why everyone's going on social. because you want the trust back of the public, that the public wants to have, and that's why everyone's going on social media, that's why people come in here and get frustrated. So I think it's one of those things where there's, you've got to earn trust, but you've also got to be giving trust, and it's having that time, so that people can understand what both you and the council are going to decide, and what you're going to put out to the public, and then also from, from Shaun's perspective, the council need to make decisions, otherwise nothing will ever get done. So I can see the frustration on both sides, and I think, I think you're actually on the same...
Yeah, I think you make a very good point, Jill, sorry.
Trying to get that, that level of, where the public are in, and you're at it.
You're absolutely right, and I agree with that, I think we're on the same page, but, and maybe we are oversensitive to, we've got to live down what the last lot did, if you like, you know, and we are sensitive to that, but we're only talking about a couple of issues here with public involvement. Today-to-day running, we will make those decisions, we'll make them in public, we'll debate them in public, and you can disagree. The only thing I say, and let's, let's be courteous and respectful to one another. But we're only talking about two issues here with public consultation, that is, as you know, club charities, that will be full public meeting. The other one is, we just want to, just write as, as you know how we feel, and that will influence our decision. And I, I just think that's fair, but I take your point, I'm not longer as we show, but we are sensitive to what's gone on in the past.
Just to clarify, I'm not saying there is an overcompensation, I'm saying maybe it's...
No, and I'm agreeing with you, because it is a very, we're very sensitive of that, you know. We have to learn the public trust, I'm not asking it as, as a right, you know. We, we are a different council, and I can't say any more than that, and we intend to show that, but it takes time, you know, to gain the public trust.
Just another, another question again, which I know you're probably going to involve the public in, especially the people of Woodlands. Where are we going LP twenty-one, because in last week's meeting, you actually said that you don't know, have you anything about LP twenty-one, is that correct?
Yeah, well, it might have come across that I don't know.
No, that's what you actually said.
That, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, no.
And as, as a district councillor, not this area, but as a district councillor, surely you should know LP twenty-one?
It's easy to pick up on words and misunderstand them, and sometimes it may have come out wrong.
You may speak in line with somebody else, like Mr.
No, I'm aware of LP twenty-one, and you're probably referring to the one, what's the name of that road?
Bealehead.
Bealehead, yes. We are, we are opposing it as much as we can. I don't know as far, where it is as far down the planning permission road, but if you want to criticise me for not knowing as much detail as other people do on LP twenty-one, I'll accept that, because I don't, and I'm not going to pretend to know something that I don't know.
What the question is, we're just, as a, as a district councillor, Jake had accepted being in for two minutes.
But I'm not the district councillor for Hensworth.
But LP twenty-one is Wakefield, it's the former local plan for Wakefield, and I appreciate you don't know which, you've got all the Curby sites, type stuff, and I appreciate that.
And I admit, as far as South Kirby goes, there's two councils actually living South Kirby, and I basically support what they do, and they have more knowledge than I have, and I was elected there last year. I'm not going to go in and interfere, I told them I would support anything they do, as I learn and go along, and it's same with this council. And I support, I trust them, and I support those decisions, and, and that's what I do. I don't pretend to know some, I don't know everything, you know, I don't know everything about LP twenty-one, you know. And that, that's the point that I was trying to make, if that means I look stupid because I don't know, well, I'll accept that.
Saying, Shaun, saying if you're the council now, we was, we was objecting in any way to sell, really, because...
I'm aware that you objected, I'm aware that John Cricket...
And I'm not saying that, and that's fine, and that's, we're just trying to clarify on what...
Well, if I can say, tell you that I oppose it as vehemently as everybody else, and I support it, and, and I know John Cricket does, most of the councillors oppose it. It's one of the areas, and I think Jake would agree, we, we disagree with the leadership of the council on it, on the housing policy. But, so I, I don't know what you're going to say, I don't know it inside and out, and I never pretended that I did.
I think I said a bit more preparedness, I shouldn't have been a question that on the first meeting.
Well, I had no idea whether it would drop up or not. I can't just be every question.
No, you can't, you can just say...
Okay, I accept your criticism then, I don't know. Well, whatever, it's your comment, I take it on board, you know, I accept, I try as much as I can to absorb as much information as I can, you know, but...
I mean, you can, whatever you say.
You know. Anybody else? Because I think, I'm aware it's good.
Right, as a parishioner, I'd like to say this, and I hope I'm speaking for the parish itself. I wanted to give you the chance, give you the chance to get this parish back to where it was, because I'm telling you now, that lot all were on before, nearly enough wrecked it, and people will not forgive them.
Thank you for that, and I hope we appreciate that we're aware of that, and it's a mountain to climb, it's a major task.
There is something that you've got to do, I keep getting complaints about, people coming and knocking on the door, I'm not a strand, I'm not a councillor now, but I did fair bring it up without swearing.
Please don't, Anne, please don't swear.
You would do, if I were blaming you for it. No, it's like, down at Warrspark, certain person down there causes more trouble, she calls me, like I say, I was sent to her for what she says I've done, I would have had a big smile on my face, but she's saying I've been, um...
I'm going to have to cut you short, Anne, because...
Right, you're running late.
No, listen...
It's about, it's about that lady down at Warrspark.
Well, we can't discuss that, that's why I'm cutting you off.
Well, I know you can, I know you can.
I'm sure it won't be the last time that it crops up, but we simply can't discuss that in terms of, you know that.
So that, and then the next thing is, full terrace, the one that been asking about that.
Yeah.
And all, you know, but...
Well, that will be published in the minutes of the last meeting, it'll be on the notice, because we covered it last, last week, you know, and so... Like I said, and when we get the notice boards up, we're too over any covering and all that.
So is it in here, then?
No, that's the minutes from last year, the minutes from last, meeting last Thursday.
Yeah.
Which hopefully will...
What I'm saying is, I'm, I'm telling these people to come and talk to you up, up here.
Absolutely.
Contact you, because it's unfair that you're getting blamed for stuff that others are doing, that others are doing, that shouldn't be doing it, and you all are getting blamed for it. If I thought you were guilty, I'd have shot you already.
I didn't say I could be the guilty one, we've only been a councillor for a couple of weeks, but, you know...
It's given then.
Yeah.
It's very difficult to get men to do it honestly.
Well, I accept that, rather sexy to him, huh?
Especially them with beers.
It's a bit, you men can't get away with it, it acts like that.
Well, you're doing that to me for...
Anyway, look, it is getting late, and, you know, I think we've covered, so it's...
Well, I hope you get a good chance to get, because you've lost that much money, I don't know how much money's gone. And there's no proof what the spender's on, no receipts and anything.
Yeah, and all these things, but I'm going to close the meeting now, now, and you can rally on all you want.
You want to start swearing, then, have to close.
Of course you can, yeah, so, yeah, the meeting's closed anyway, and thanks all for being...
Right, you're a load of...
Fill your bowls.
I think you'll do brilliant.
Thank you very much.
If I thought you wouldn't, I would tell you, like I did with them lot.
We're certainly going to try.
Alan knows that. Because I worried I'd done, they heard it, and they had a proof that I'm very tall.
I've enjoyed your meetings, anyway.
You've got one?
I haven't got one of them.
I've got, I've talked about it before you, with Big Head.
Actually, Big Head is...
When water was coming inside the corner.
It's going to be going in here. But the stipulations are...
That's nice, Paul.
One of the things that wants us to...
That's nice, Paul.
Having these awards.
I've got it out of here.
Who gave you that?
I've got it out of, bow!
Oh, you jammies, sir.